Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 13th Open Meeting of the North Andover Select Board. I would call this meeting to order at 7:03 and ask that you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comments tonight? We have a very big audience, but I don't think any public comments.
Yeah, there's not a parking spot outside.
No joke. Yes. Stan, you weren't quick enough.
I keep forgetting. I can't do it at the end, right? Stanleyford 43, Stone Cleve Road. I just had a couple of questions that I wanted to throw into the mix about revenue. I've forgotten, I don't really think, Ms. Rodriguez, you're going to be talking about this specifically tonight, but I'm just wondering about sort of when the Amazon revenue is going to come on. I just have forgotten what that timeline is. And will there be any, as they get their occupancy permit, will we start getting revenue from what's in the building, not the building itself? So those will be my two questions. I'm just sort of interested.
Personal property.
Right, because they're going to have, you know, $100 million with the robots or computers or something in that building. So anyway, my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Moving on to our new business, item A is the presentation by our Town Manager of the Fiscal Year 24 Recommended Budget.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this Fiscal Year 24 Town Manager's Recommended Budget. We do have many of our department heads here with us tonight. If you have any questions as we go through, although they will be happy to come back and answer any questions as we move forward as well. We are presenting this budget as well on Wednesday to the Finance Committee. So it certainly is an abbreviated and quick process this week, but we're looking forward to starting to talk about the budget and building information and knowledge about it. So this first chart talks a little bit about what our Fiscal Year 24 Budget Revenue looks like. Again, we're presenting a balanced budget within capacity as determined by our forecasting exercises and our additional information we've learned since then. This does take into consideration the advice of the Revenue and Fixed Costs Committee. As you know, that's kind of where we start our process is by meeting with them and talking about what we see available for the coming years. So looking at this, you can see what we actually spent in 2020, 2021, and 2022, and then what the adopted budget was in 2023. And obviously, we're halfway through that year, so we don't know what those actuals look like yet. But the Fiscal Year 24 Recommended Revenues are the amount of money that we could spend on the budget is $130.7 million. So just a little bit of explanation about what some of these things are, because I know that's often a question. The other taxes, rarely are motor vehicle, males, penalties and interest, and any pilots. So the one pilot we do have is with the North Andover Housing Authority. The charges for service are things like solid waste fees, ambulance fees, and other fees like building license and permits. License and permits is burial, food, gas, and liquor. Miscellaneous revenue is things like our cell towers, fines, interest income in our host community annual fees. And then all other resources are all the sources are things like interfunds, capital transfers, and reserve transfers. So the revenue for the Fiscal Year 24 Budget totals $123.3 billion. It's a 4.34% increase from the last fiscal year, and that does not include free cash for reserves and capital. So when we're talking about what our revenues look like for building our budget, we never include free cash in those. And so we compare it apples to apples every year by looking at just the revenues that we talked about previously. Our property taxes are estimated to grow by 4.61%. Our local receipts are estimated to grow by 6.4%. And local aid is level funded. So as you know, every year we do level fund our local aid. We won't know until well after we set our budget what the governor will decide for local aid. It's kind of a silly process. You'd think by now we would have lined that up, but we have not. So every year we level fund that, and then it's a little bit of a surprise as we move forward. Hopefully, it's a good surprise. It usually is. You know, this year, one of the things that we're watching closely is that they do think revenues are going to be up on the state side due to gaming and, of course, the new sport betting. So it'll be interesting to see that play out. Local receipts for the first time in two years are actually increasing. So if I remember correctly, two years ago, local receipts decreased by 400,000 due to COVID mostly. And the year before that, it actually decreased by 60,000 last year. So we're very excited to see this increasing. It's by 700,000. So if you really think about it, we're kind of making up two years of loss and finally seeing an increase. So to me, that kind of shows that we're starting to see a little bit of a flux in our receipt, which is good. And then additionally, we're seeing about 4.2 million increased property tax. So just talking a little bit about how we get those numbers. So we all know that Proposition 2.5 allows us to raise 2.5% of the tax levy, plus any new construction. So that's improvements or new buildings, and that's called new growth. So anything new that's built, whether it's a gas station or a small warehouse or a house, those are new things that we get and we can pull onto the tax levy that year. Up until literally last week, we had forecasted $2 million in new growth and then learned late January, early February, that only about half of that is going to come to fruition due to delays in the Amazon personal property. So we had been planning for 2 million. We're now planning for 1 million. That means the other 1 million we pushed to Fiscal Year 25. It's not a horrible problem to have because it spreads that out, but it wasn't a fun problem to have when our budget book had already gone to print. So thank God for the team because they really pulled it together. So if you look at our new growth chart on the side here, it kind of gives you an idea of where we've been. And you can see that we've had some strange years. We've had some normal years. I think we're starting to get back to normal. So we typically had budgeted about that $750,000 number. You can see, as we know, 2022 was weird. We're going to talk about that more later. 2018, 2017, I think we're going to start seeing those numbers again. So we're going to have to get used to more normal and modest budget increases. So a reminder again, one more time, I can't say it enough. Last year's new growth was weird. It was extraordinary. It was one time. We used it for capital and a transfer to capital stabilization to use with the Kittredge Design. We did that purposefully. We used it last year with the plan not to use it all this year, but instead to bring it on slowly for the 17-year implementation of Facilities Master Plan 2. So we have to keep working that plan if we're going to have that success. And we'll talk a little bit more about the levy as we go forward. So this gives you an idea of the revenue and where it makes up it. So as you can see, really, the majority of our budget, almost 75%, is property taxes. And about 87% of that is residential. So that's, it's really still the majority, even with these new projects that we have coming on, is built on residential. And if you think about it, a lot of the new projects that we do have coming on, Minko, Avalon, those still are at the residential rate. So we'll continue to see that. So the next thing we talk about is our budget expenditures. So you can see that this year, our recommended budget is the $128.4 million. This is all in our state assessments. So that's basically what happens is we get local aid, and then they send us a bill back and say, now you can pay us this money back. It's our capital. It's our reserve transfers, but it does not include water and sewer enterprise funds. And this gives you a little bit of an idea of where our expenses are looking like. So you can see, we really do hover around that 50% mark for education. From, I think, the time I've been here, it's kind of been 46, 47, and now close to 48. It's not really a true number because it doesn't include the shared services. It doesn't include health insurance. So it's really more like 70% of the budget. But it's hard to break that out to show through things like the assessment. So the only thing I will say is that the debt is never included when you're doing education. So even if we end up taking a bunch of debt for Facilities Master Plan 2 for schools, that would not be included in the education bucket. So a little bit about that breakdown. The Fiscal Year 24 Budget includes increases of 3% in departmental spending from Fiscal Year 23. Municipal departments are at 5.7. Shared services are 33%. So this is a very small budget, and when we make small changes, it looks huge. Remember that from the last couple of years. I think two years ago, we had a 26% decrease there. It's just small changes are big. And the education budget is increasing by 5.5%. And I'm sorry, that's glitching up there. I don't know. Is it glitching through you too?
Yeah.
It is? Okay. I feel like my kid's calling it glitching. The municipal budget is increasing by $2.27 million, and the school budget is increasing by $3.1 million. So a little bit about health insurance. As you know, we joined the GIC in 2014. We were self-insured, and we appropriated $11 million of health insurance. 10 years later, and our health insurance budget is still $11.9 million. The health insurance breakdown is roughly half school and employee insurance, and then the remaining half is about 3 million retirees and 2 million town employees. This has been a very interesting year to budget for this. I would say almost impossible. We are including a 6% increase for the GIC payment, which is a conservative estimate. However, the GIC is voting on rates in February and March, so we know that there's going to be changes. Additionally, there looks like there's going to be the deletion of some plans, which means that people, our population is going to be migrating to different plans, which may have different costs. So this was a really tough year to estimate this. Additionally, we have a new PEC agreement with our employees, and that goes into effect on July 1st. The intent of that agreement was to really bring more equity amongst the employees. So if you remember correctly, in all of the conversations we've had about all of our different contracts and bargaining units, is we had insurance rates that were for employees that were hired before 2012, and then insurance rates for employees that were hired after 2012. What we really tried to do this time around is bring everybody as close as possible to the same chart. It's very difficult for HR to administer, but it also really does bring bad feelings amongst the employees. So we did our best to kind of get it to that point. And then finally, we also are implementing July 1st an Opt-DeL program. So we do think we'll see savings based on the Opt-DeL program. So in my experience, in February, we saved about $400,000, bigger class of people. Dee headed in Lexington. Dee saved about 350, again, more employees, but we know we'll see some savings there. So this was a difficult one, but we're comfortable with where we are for the budget this year. This lets you know the town staffing. So we are asking for one additional employee. It's actually two part-time employees. All of the costs of those employees have been accounted for in our budget. So that includes the OPEB cost, health insurance, workers' comp, Medicare. We kind of look at an employee as an all-in approach, and that's usually about $17,000 to $18,000 per employee.
And where were those employees with departments?
I'm going to tell you in one minute.
Oh, okay.
It's coming. One second. Here we go. Ready? There it is. So it's actually two. They're pretty small. We're increasing and assessing the part-time data collection person to a full-time data collection person. Assessment Bill Mitchell could speak on this much more eloquently than I could, but there are certain requirements from the Department of Revenue that we need to meet annually. We brought this person on last year to help us start to make sure we're meeting those requirements. She's doing an amazing job. We don't want to lose her. And I think we'll start to see more revenue come in because of the work she's doing. So we're very excited to keep that person there. And we're increasing hours for the van driver at the senior center. And additionally, we are bringing on, which I actually don't see here, a part-time person for HR, but it's less than 20 hours, which is maybe why I'm not seeing it. A few other things that we've done is we moved all of our electricity and heating items from each budget into one budget. So if you remember correctly, over the last couple of years, we did this with postage. We did it with gasoline. So what's been happening basically is that every single building gets one person who's in charge of the building, and they get the bills. And they're basically processing them. They're trying to figure out, you know, where the money should come from. So when we got all these budgets back this year, and electricity and heating fuel were something that was really kind of unknown for people, we actually had budgets that increased by 1% for electricity and other budgets that increased by 60% for electricity. And we were like, how do we manage this, right? So we decided we'd bring them all into the facilities budget and manage them all through there. Again, for the fourth year, we funded the Finance Committee Reserve at the $1.5 million. That's been something that's really been working well. We have a salary reserve for unsettled collective bargaining agreements. So I believe we're going to have three, two, so clerical and library. We have the COLA at 2% for public safety. This is kind of an interesting public safety budget for both police and fire, because remember, we're implementing three years of collective bargaining agreements into those contracts, into this budget. So while we had the salary reserves that we were holding out in separate parts of the budget, we're now seeing all of that getting pushed into those budgets. So it looks like a major change in the two of their budgets, even though it's basically three years of changes. We also have a permanent second officer in fire prevention. So one of the things that we have noticed with having the second officer in fire prevention with Amazon is that they have caught so many things. You've all noticed it too, right? We've had these propane tanks that have come before us for the first time and other things like that. And so this has been something that's really worked well, and we were able to do this in a really cost-effective manner. We had the senior center, the increased hours for the van driver. And then finally, we had a lot of kind of budgetary increases, particularly at DPW and in the water and sewer budgets, that are really due to supply costs, which means, just meaning that things like asphalt were more than they ever been before. And we got out to bid, got new contracts, and we're kind of stuck with those contractual prices. We're also seeing that we're going out to bid right now, or we're not going to bid, but we're negotiating about trash and tipping fees will be coming up soon because that contract ends this year. So those are all things that we took into account when we built this budget. So just talking a little bit about the levy capacity. So we are purposely leaving 2.0, almost $3 million on the table. This was an essential part of making Facilities Master Plan 2 a success. This was something that we talked about last year, that we had this money coming on due to Amazon and their TIF going into effect, in that if we spent all this money, it would have a very negative impact on our taxpayers. We still, we still know that, right? So we're making sure that we're holding that money out. So this is money that we could raise this year, and that's kind of the difference you're seeing between that revenue chart and that expenditure chart, right, is that $2.2 million. So that $2.2 million is money we could raise. We could choose to as a community raise. But if we did do that, we know that the impact on taxpayers would be very negative. By leaving this money here, we're able to go back over the next 10 years as the Amazon TIF comes to fruition and 20% comes on every two years, pull that money back, and use it for Facilities Master Plan 2. And so that's.
You say leave it here. I'm confused. What does that mean? You say leave it here. Where are we leaving it?
We're basically not raising it.
We're not raising it.
We're choosing not to raise it.
Right. Okay. So it's not really money that we have that we're putting in an account somewhere. It's just money we're choosing not to raise.
It's money we're choosing not to raise.
Right. Okay.
One thing I will say is that we don't know yet if the TIF will go into effect this year or not. We're still working with Amazon to determine whether or not they are going to be at full completion by June 30th. If it doesn't, then they'll get a tax bill like they got this year, which will just be the percentage of their completion, like we did last year, because we have accepted that local option that allows us to do that. We are watching very closely what's going to happen, particularly with the tax rate. So last year, when Amazon came on, it took on more of the impact that taxpayers maybe would have felt last year. So as they're coming off, they may have actually kind of under-inflated taxpayers' bills last year. So we're watching that because we want, what we are aware of is that taxpayers could have an effect of more than just one year of tax bill this year. So if you remember last year, I gave the example of the balloon, and we were blowing the balloon up, and Amazon was taking more of the balloon, and the residents were getting less of the balloon. There's a chance Amazon took even more of the balloon than we thought they would, and so taxpayers' bills may have been smaller. So we're just watching that very, very closely. But we won't have more information on that until the values are done, and that won't be till the fall. So it's just something that we're really cognit of and that we're aware of, and that we're making sure that we're keeping an eye on as we're moving forward. So that's the regular budget. I'm just going to go into the enterprise funds quickly. There's really not, as you saw from the highlights page, a lot of major changes in this budget. It's really, a lot of it's contractual, but we're excited that we're able to do the things that we're able to do. For the sewer enterprise fund budget, the operating budget is actually decreasing by $162,000 from Fiscal Year 23. The sewer rates are forecasted to remain the same for the 12 consecutive year. But I will continue to warn you that a rate increase may be necessary in the future if the greater Lawrence Sewer District assessment continues to increase. So as you know, we typically do about a 6% increase for that every year. Most of the increases in this budget, like I said, are due to supply and demand issue for materials. We do have retained earnings of $5.9 million. We had some debt that came off. For the water enterprise fund, this budget is increasing by $801,616 to $5.6 million. If I remember correctly, last year, both of these budgets actually decreased. This budget has retained earnings of $5.4 million. As you know, we've been talking about staffing plans for DPW and changes that they would like to see moving forward. One of the things that DPW has been very cognit of is the fact that they're having trouble filling positions as we are in all of our divisions. And so they wanted to really focus on specialized, specialized employees first. So what they're asking for, for their first year of staffing, is a focus on the enterprise funds with a staff engineer and a laborer in the water enterprise fund budget. So what we have found is that we're having a lot of luck with the engineer that we have hired and with the project manager that we've hired on the DPW side, but that we're using a lot of engineering services on the water enterprise side. And we think having somebody in has to be really helpful. And then obviously, there's the need for the additional laborer. And then this gives you kind of an idea of where our revenue comes from for our enterprise funds. So about 35% of it is from water fees, about 32% is sewer fees, and then 10% is what, basically, what we do for transfers to capital. And then for our expenditures, about 25% of the expenditures that come out of the enterprise funds are actually the GSLD assessment. So we're really, that's really where the majority of it is going. And then just to talk a little bit about what our reserves look like. So our stabilization account balance as of June 30th was $5.4 million. We're recommending a Fiscal Year 24 appropriation of $299,000, and that will keep us in line with our financial policies. Our capital stabilization account balance is $4.6 million, which is actually really amazing. We are recommending a Fiscal Year 24 appropriation of $1.3 million. So again, we are saving debt in the budget for future years, but we don't want to just kind of save it and not use it. So a part of our motion at town meeting will be to transfer that debt payment, the $1 million, over to the capital stabilization account so we can save it for our projects that we have coming forward. The OPEB trust fund balance is $5.5 million. I got really excited, and I ran into Lynn the other day because our OPEB liability as of June 30th was only $112 million. And the year before that, it was $144 million. So I was like, look at us. She's like, yeah, it's interest rates. I was like, oh. So I got so excited, and she burst my bubble, but it was fine. But it is down to $112 million, so we were pretty excited about that. The specialized stabilization balance is still at $764,503. We have not used that in four years. So if we do have issues with special ed, with special ed, and obviously, you know that, you know, one student coming in or two students coming in can cause a big kind of differential. The way that I like to fund that is through that Finance Committee Reserve because it's really an operating function. And so going into a stabilization or into an account like this does create a structural deficit. It's not like that is not going to be an issue again the following year if you have a student come on. So we're trying to get away from using this. However, I don't think it's a bad thing to keep it in case you have some kind of emergency, so we've just kind of held it. And then our free cash certified was $12.7 million.
That's a great number.
Yeah. So we do have some other free cash articles that we're going to bring forward. We're going to bring forward a rolling stock DPW article. So these were some items that were in the DPW budget that were for smaller vehicles, so they didn't meet the threshold for capital expenditure, which is $25,000. But I also didn't want to fund them through the budget because they were one-time expenses. So we're going to have just a separate article. It will be rolling stock. We have kind of a funny Stevens Estate article. We're going to have three articles about Stevens Estate. So DOR has asked us to do special legislation for our revolving account. So we will have that article. And then they closed out our current revolving account of $372,304. So we will have two other articles. One will be for Fiscal Year 23, transferring what we've spent for the Stevens Estate to the budget. And then one for Fiscal Year 24, transferring what's coming in for revenue to the budget. And then Fiscal Year 25, the revolving account should be in place and all set. It's a little bit complicated. It's as complicated as it sounds. But basically, by doing all of those measures, we continue to make sure that the money that's coming in for the Stevens Estate and was previously budgeted and brought in for the Stevens Estate continues to stay with the Stevens Estate. And then the other thing we'll be doing with the Stevens Estate is updating you through, hopefully, video about the progress that's been made at the gatehouse, because that's almost done. And also, the boiler is almost done. We won't take a video of the boiler, but we'll tell you about the boiler. So that will be exciting as well. A lot of really good things have happened with that. But so that was what you will see there. The money that's coming out of free cash is all money that went into free cash from the Stevens Estate. So it's basically, it's going to be a transfer. And then we have the $6.1 million in capital. And so at the end of town meeting, if there's no other articles, and I anticipate, maybe there may be some. Maybe we'll have one for 400 degree upon road. I don't know. We'll have $5.2 million in free cash left. So remember that what happens with free cash is basically, at the end of the fiscal year, it goes away, and then it gets recertified. So we have been carrying along about $5 million of free cash annually. And that's the budget. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know it's complicated, a lot of moving parts. Lynn and the team have done an amazing job. I don't know what we would do without them.
Well, let's start with Stan's questions. Have we answered Stan's questions?
Did I answer your question, Stan?
When is the Amazon going to come online?
Sure. So I guess the easy answer is we don't know. So we had thought that we have been hopeful that the TIF would go into effect by June 30th of this year, that they would get their occupancy permits by June 30th of this year. Due to supplier delays, they may not. So if they, and if they don't, it's actually not a horrible thing because they'll get a full tax bill again. It just will delay the TIF an additional year. So it could be Fiscal Year 24. It could be Fiscal Year 25 that they get their occupancy permits. For their personal property, that's kind of the delay that we were talking about. So personal property is a little bit different. Personal property actually runs on a January schedule instead of a June 30th schedule. So we already know by doing our review and walkthrough that the personal property was only going to be at about a quarter of what we anticipated it being total because they're behind due to supply. behind due to suppliers. So they'll have some personal property this year, probably around $500,000 in growth. And then the rest of the personal property, the 1.5 million approximately, will come on in fiscal year '25. Amazon's just a gift that keeps on giving. They just spread it out over the longest time period ever.
When did we get the building permits? Was that 2019? We did the building permit piece?
So building permits, let's see, if I have it still in my chart. Might be that far back.
Yeah, it wasn't, I don't think it was in your chart.
Lynn, what do you think? It must have been 19, because it's not in the 2020 actual.
Yeah, I'm thinking it was.
2021.
6.6 million.
Okay, so you can see it in charges for service, where it goes from 4.6.
49 of project.
Oh, okay.
If you look at my little chart, it goes from 4.6 to 11.3 between 2020 and 2021.
Oh, yeah. Okay, got it.
And then in 2022, we got the additional permits with the, oh, that's the, the electrical, right? So in 2022 is when the electrical permit came in.
So why wouldn't that show up in licensing and permits? And why does it be charged? I mean, it seems like it's, isn't it licensing and permits that we're getting the money for?
So typically, they do it in charges for service, because it's actually a charge for service. It's what a permit fee is supposed to be.
Right.
Right? It's not supposed to cost any more than what the actual service costs for you to inspect it, which is why it's typically put in there.
Okay. All right. I missed that. I was looking for it, and I didn't, I didn't see that jump there, actually. I missed it. I think this is, I agree. So what do you see as challenges coming up? I mean, we saw a lot of great information in here. What do you see as challenges?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think next year is going to be, next year's budget will be a challenge. I think that a lot of the cost centers are used to seeing larger increases, and we're not going to be there next year. Even with the rail property coming on for Amazon, our regular new growth is just returning to normal numbers, or even below normal numbers. So, you know, I think that is going to be challenging to set those expectations early, that we're not going to be seeing these larger increases that we've gone maybe used to over the last couple of years. But that doesn't mean that we can't still achieve the goal for facilities matched to plan two and the vision, because we've kind of built that out in a way that allows us to. So I think that's going to be a challenge. I think keeping track of what the impacts are going to be of Amazon, and we're kind of watching that very closely, but that's definitely going to be challenging over the next year.
But the good news.
It's coming.
It's coming.
With all the layoffs and everything that are out there and so many other businesses, it's still on track to come.
Yes, we've been assured on many, many conversations. I mean, there's been times, actually, when Amazon has called, just because there's been articles in the local newspapers about other facilities being closed down, that this facility is not in any way, shape, or form in any type of danger. The location is just too good.
And they're so far into the process.
Yes.
That it would be, I can't imagine.
I think it's just, I mean, we used to joke with them that it was a race, right? Like who was going to win, the senior center or Amazon? I never actually thought it might be the senior center, but it's going to be the senior center. Yeah. So it's all good.
It just makes it hard for you to anticipate what's coming up.
Very, yes.
As always, every person in this room has worked hard to make that.
Laura, do you have a question?
I guess, one question I have is, this budget's going to see contract three for Columbia Gas, correct? And did DPW work on including? I know, like, when we did contract two, we did, we kind of consolidated and made sure we did as much as we could in that area. Have they done that as well for contract three?
So they're out to bid, I think, actually, right now, Jim? About to be? About to be out to bid for contract three, and I think four is included as well.
Because we need to spend the money, right?
We need to spend the money.
And people are very antsy to have the work finished.
So if this next two contracts include everything except for Main Street.
Main Street and a little section of Sutton.
Main Street and a little section of Sutton. So we'll be seeing it kind of expediated. So yes, it will include, it doesn't include any additional funding for those projects, although there is funding through our capital plan for roads. But we are ready to move forward with three and four.
Will we be, if we will be able to complete three and four with the funding that we have?
We're going to have to, yes.
So I know we had talked about kind of sidewalk work in those areas, is that still a consideration, like we did in contract two?
So we're looking at the sidewalks there, and Jim, you can feel free to join me if you want to, because I'm sure you have more information than I do. But the good news about area three and four is that actually, a lot of the sidewalks are in better shape than they were in section two. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's exactly it. So contract two was really challenging, meeting the ADA issues. I think we are going to have to make cuts. I mean, it's, you know, we're not going to be able to put granite curbing everywhere. You know, we're going to have to use, so in some areas in contract four, I think it is, you have concrete sidewalks. If they're in decent shape, we're going to have to leave them, and then we'll just replace some panels. So it is going to be a struggle. I mean, as Melissa mentioned, construction is just one of those areas where costs have just gone up tremendously, and you're talking about the Columbia Gas Agreement that, right now, it's five years old. I mean, we, you know, 2018, and so it's been quite a while.
And even the trees, right? Like, those are things we're struggling with right now, between the cost and the drought that people don't realize. So it's like, things like that are hard for us to get right now. Yeah.
You know, the panels, I think, the people that have the concrete panels, they like them. And so having to just replace them, I think, will make a lot of people happy that it's going to have the same look.
Yeah, we don't want to change the character of any of these neighborhoods. Ideally, when we first envisioned the project, I mean, we wanted to put granite curbing everywhere.
Yeah.
It's just not a reality based on the cost, and really, what was negotiated, that really wasn't part of it. It was, you know, kind of a best fit. I mean, ultimately, what we had agreed to was pave the roads and pave the sidewalks. And as part of, I guess, combining with our roads program and our sidewalk program, which is, you know, with extensions, we've been able to kind of leverage those funds, and we did a lot of drainage improvements and a lot of, you know, upgrades to the area. I think we have left the areas better than before we got there, but it's just going to be a continuing challenge, for sure.
Yeah.
And we also have the force de majeure issue, so we tried to do a force de majeure. They agreed to maybe half of the timing that we asked for, so we are up against the timeframe for getting the work done, so.
As part of this process, are we going to be looking at, like, crosswalks and traffic calming measures in some of those areas?
One of the areas that we're actually looking right now is Salt and Starl Road, just behind the school. We're looking at improving some of the intersections there, definitely upgrades. One of the things that we're going to be doing, it's actually contract two B. If you remember, we presented a full redesign of Waverly Road. Cost was just astronomical. We couldn't do it all, but what we are able to do is, in front of the school, we're going to be adding curbing, we're going to be pulling the parking over to the same side as the school. So now, we're not going to have kids crossing all over the place, and we're taking the same approach behind the school where people park. So we've really tried to implement some of the intersection improvements and pedestrian improvements.
Good news.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for directing me as far as.
Hopefully, we'll have more to work with.
And just, I, it was surprised, not surprising to me, but I just, I think people need to hear it. Over four years, we have increased the school's budget $10 million.
Amazing.
Which is amazing, and such a credit to you and the partnership with the schools. But I just want people to really absorb that, that we've increased the budget $10 million.
I was talking to them the other day about all the goals they've met, class size-wise. I mean, they've really made a lot of progress. It's amazing to see.
And Stevens Estate, will we get, at some point, some sort of financial update?
Yes, so they owe us their audit this last, this month. So we anticipate seeing that soon. They do not, based on our last conversation with them, they will not be above the metric that triggers the 8%, but they did say they think they will be for next year, based on their, on what they have scheduled. Yeah, so we were pretty excited. But yeah, they've made a lot of progress. They were here the other day, I forget why, we were discussing something, yeah, we were rolling over capital, and they're pretty excited about what's coming for next year.
Will we see that too, the capital improvement?
Yes. So Lynn, Laurie has just finished working with a consultant on their five-year plan. Interestingly, we accomplished in one year a lot of what was on their five-year plan, which is awesome, and a lot of what is left is structural issues in the carriage house.
Which is the grant that you applied for.
Which is the grant. It's very interesting, because we were looking at documents the other day, and all the buildings had different names. We were like, "What?"
Called the stables, not the carriage house. You guys can get into that.
Yeah, we were so confused. We're like, "These are different names." And apparently, they used to be like a little gatekeeper's house.
There was a gardener's house.
Gardener's house.
The gardener's house, which isn't there anymore, and they, yeah, the stables, the carriage house is actually what we keep calling the garage.
But it makes sense, because the carriage was.
The carriage, yeah.
Kind of like a car. And then these stables would be.
Where the animals are, so, and, yeah, it's, and it still looks like a stable house.
It does.
And even has some reminiscent odors of horses living there, not just a farm smell, so.
But we were laughing. We were like, "For four years, you've been calling this the wrong thing."
But it makes sense.
It does.
When you think about it, what they call it was really the correct way to call it.
So it was, a lot of it wasn't as bad as we anticipated it being, which is awesome. So like I said, we really did manage to tick off a lot of the big things, so yes, we'll share that plan with you and bring forward kind of what their priorities are going to be for the next four years, but we're in pretty good shape right now, so.
And anyone who hasn't been there, the work that they have done so far, it's just beautiful. It's like they decorated parts of the inside of the house, and then.
They cleaned it up so well, it's.
And where you sit out on the, not patio, but like, I don't know, what would we call it? Balcony on the ground, you know, but stunning. It's just stunning, the landscaping, everything. So if you're thinking of getting married or having an event, you should go check it out, really. It's just beautiful.
And they've been a good partner. They've been really good to work with, so it's been good.
Two quick things. One, I also wanted to point out that the 5.5% increase for the schools, like, couldn't come with, without a lot of hard work on everybody's part. Our schools need it, and we're so happy that we were able to make it happen, and I know it's creativity and even sacrifice that got us there. But we are a much stronger community, the stronger our schools are, and we see the benefits of that every day. So my second point is to actually, I love having all of you in front of us, because we can thank you for all of your hard work to make this happen. I know it is kind of in flux, and it changes in ways you're not expecting, and every single person in here goes with the flow and works together to make us a successful community, and we are so lucky and grateful. I know it's not like this everywhere.
We're very lucky.
So thank you. Any other comments?
Great job.
Okay, yeah, great job.
We'll be back here Wednesday.
Okay.
It'll be exciting.
So on that note, thank you for coming today.
Very impressive showing.
You're great.
Definitely. What's everybody? So that's what we wanted to do, this before the office, so they can send.
Oh, she was talking to the staff.
Yeah, she was talking to the staff. Okay, heading on.
And then there was just one.
Stan staying with us.
Stan just staying with us.
It always seems, it doesn't seem right to leave.
You picked a nice short agenda.
One of these days, Jenna will put public comment at the end, so I can wait for her to say something good.
Okay.
Do that for me, I know she will. When did we change that? We changed that in 2000.
I like it at the end.
Probably around 2016, I think we changed that or something. I forget. I remember it was at the end.
The part I don't like is that you can't talk about the issue at hand. You got to come up with that ahead of time.
Moving on to item B.
There we go.
A vote to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of North Andover and ASME Local 3687 for a term of July 2, 2022 through June 30, 2025. Can you discuss this in executive? Last week when I wasn't here, Dee, do you want to run us through it?
Sure.
Okay.
So we are, have a tentative agreement, and the ASME union has ratified, so we did receive that.
Good information. It is a three-year agreement encompassing fiscal years '23, '24, '25. We are holding with the COLA pattern that we have reached with all of our other unions for the same period of time, for fiscal '23 at 1.5%, fiscal '24 at 2.0%, and fiscal '25 at 2.0%. We have added two new steps to the salary schedule. Step six will be 2.5% greater than step five, and step seven will be 2.5% greater than step six. Many of the people in this agreement won't be at the maximum step, so this impact is very manageable for this contract life. The members will receive a one-time $300 signing bonus, the payroll following the ratification if the board votes this evening. We have made some language changes to clarify step increases, to add the Mass Parental Leave Act that was signed in the interim, and to also put in Better Family Medical Leave Act language. And also, the other financial package is for some of our water sewer positions to receive a hazardous duty stipend of $375. They do have to get into some hazardous situations in what they do, so we felt that that was an appropriate amount of money. And then, one of the things that the town will be getting is an annual driving record review for all of the drivers, and that's just a very good safety measure for us to do, and we're very happy that they agreed to that. And we do have appropriate funding for this contract. Thank you.
I have the money.
Yeah, we use our reserves, so, but we're very excited to have this contract signed.
Great. Okay.
Chair, I'll move to approve the collective bargain agreement between the Town of North Andover and the AFS CME Local 3687 for a term of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
You have a second? Any further comments?
Just thank you for all your hard work, and it was a long road to make it.
As usual, right? You always get it done, thank you. Okay.
Power for the course.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, we're going to move on to item C, which is the waiver of the right of first refusal for 180 Chickering Road, Unit 307C. We've done this multiple times.
Chair, I'll move to waive the right of first refusal for 180 Chickering Road, Unit 307C.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This unit is actually, someone, the buyer is taking advantage of our down payment assistance program.
Thank you for sharing that.
Very, very exciting.
It's exciting.
Very exciting.
Actually, I've been, I've been sharing it as well to people who are thinking of buying it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good program.
It is.
Okay, item D is our appointment section. We are gonna take them one at a time tonight. I will turn it over to our appointment committee.
So the first appointment that we have this evening is Dan Spears, and he's a lovely gentleman. He actually lives in Haverhill and is a published poet, very active in bringing poetry to the communities. They're working on, what did he call it? A circle, a necklace of parks?
Poetry, what?
In a necklace of parks that form a necklace in the Merrimack Valley.
Yeah, trying to put all the towns together, yeah.
And they do, was it Shakespeare that they did? No, it wasn't Shakespeare, it was.
Quite, he had quite a resume.
Quite a resume. But they put on these productions in England and New York, and he's taken part in that as well. So he's excited to be part of our poet laureate committee, so that, to bring all the Merrimack Valley poets together. So that is our first appointment, and I will, oh, you go ahead.
I will say, I've met, I've met Dan, and I'm really excited that he's willing to bring all of his talent to our, to our community, so. I will take a motion.
Chair, I'll appoint Dan Spears to the poet laureate committee for a term ending June 30th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
He's also a published songwriter as well.
Oh, he did the Haverhill anthem, right? He wrote the anthem.
He's got quite a resume.
Wow, he does, he's an interesting.
He had a little booklet of all his works in it that's been published.
That's great. Our second appointment is Michael Nay to the Commission on Ability Assistance, if you wanna share one of you.
Sure. So Michael is new to town, he lives right off of Main Street here. He has a, very enthusiastic about serving on the Commission on Ability Assistance. I believe his mother has been in that role in Bloxford for quite a while, and she herself has mobility issues, and he takes this very much to heart. And I think he brings a lot of energy to this committee. Will bring a lot of energy to committees. He's a, you know, seems to be really ready to roll up his sleeves and get working on it. I think he's already attended some meetings, and he's always, he's already talked to the chair. So we're excited to put yet another person on the Commission on Ability Assistance, because that committee had been lacking on people to serve on that. And in the last month, we've, we've put two really great people on that, that board, so we're very happy with this so far. Because I think this brings them to a quorum now, that they can actually vote on articles and such.
Is there a full board now, Rick?
There are full board, yeah.
I would, I would move approval. Again, I, his resume is fantastic. I happened to meet him as I was coming into the office, and he was just a bundle of energy. He was a nice, nice guy.
Good chance to meet him.
Okay.
He's a contractor.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Now, I would just move approval on Ashley. I think we've all, we know her.
Everybody knows Ashley.
And she's on everybody's committee in some way, somehow.
Yes.
But.
I think she'll be a welcome, welcome addition to.
Another bundle of energy, so, that's great. So I would move approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I'm gonna abstain from it.
Aye.
Aye.
So, three of one abstentions, so.
Or could we, I'm sorry, we didn't include the term dates in each of those. Should we go back just for the record to state them? So Dan Spears would be for a term ending June 30th, 2025. Michael Nay would be for a term ending June 30th, 2024. And Ashley would be for a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Perfect. Thank you for getting that. All right.
Laurie, what is going to happen?
Jillian.
Jillian, okay.
She'll work it up.
Why don't you?
So, all right. That being said, our next meeting date is scheduled for February 27th, 2023, and with no further comments.
Can I make one comment?
You sure can.
So we have the public input session coming up on Thursday night at 6:30. So that's February 16th, here in the senior center, for the 400 Great Pond Road Steering Committee. We've got a presentation planned, and hoping to get some input from the public on their thoughts on the direction that we should go with the building. The group has been great. We've met, well, I think, at least since early December. We've met twice in December, twice in January, and so far, twice in February, plus a site visit. So it's been a busy group. They've put a lot of work into, you know, at least understanding the building and the property.